Good evening. Thank you for joining us. Would you please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Yon.
By our heads. Lord, I want to thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon this city, its employees, elected officials, and citizens. Let us all continue to be grateful for the grace you have shown us. Let us continue to put you first in our deliberations and decisions. I ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, who died, that we may have eternal life. Amen.
Call to order on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting of the mayor and council. First order of business, we have tonight's agenda for consideration for approval. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for the motion. You have in your packet our draft minutes for our meeting on May first. Are there any changes, revisions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no changes or revisions, I will make a motion to approve the draft minutes as presented.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one informational item this evening, and it's information regarding the Southern Cities Economic Initiative Grant, the National League of Cities. Ms. Andi Leslie?
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you guys for allowing me a brief moment to share this with you all. It will probably be your favorite agenda item tonight because I'm not asking for any money. We're actually receiving money, which is exciting. You probably saw the press release, so I will be very brief, but we were one of twenty cities selected in the southeast region by the National League of Cities to be the recipient of a fifteen thousand dollar planning grant through the Southern Cities Economic Initiative Program. So what that means is we will have six months. We've just begun the planning process, kind of going through a boot camp, if you will, doing lots of virtual calls and learning from other cities and learning from the peers in our cohort. So it's pretty amazing to be in a cohort with cities like Nashville, Tennessee, Jacksonville, Florida, Atlanta, Georgia. And so I feel very small in comparison, but they're learning, they're also learning a lot throughout this process. They've also got a lot of existing issues to learn from. So we will get the fifteen thousand dollars to put towards our current initiatives that support two of our tenants and our roadmap that is advancing regional economic success and celebrating that the diversity. So we currently have planned, as you guys know, several classes that are geared toward our Hispanic community. We just had our first class about two weeks ago in the Jones Building where we shared through the Small Business Development Center, shared with our community members completely in Spanish on how to get licensed through the city and through the state to register their businesses, to make sure they're operating legally. And then we plan to have more classes with them to talk more about specific business development initiatives, help them gain access to capital financing and other programs. So we're really excited. I've hosted a number of classes like that throughout the last eight years working with local government, and we're usually lucky if we get ten or fifteen people to show up to those. And we had over fifty people show up to this class, so I think that just goes to show what a need there is in our community for that. So we don't know exactly what the plan is going to look like. The goal is to kind of refine that process throughout this boot camp program for the next six months. So I'll be excited to share more with you guys. Once we complete the program, we will have the opportunity to apply for more funding for implementation, so we can request up to sixty thousand dollars. So we're excited to see what comes of this. I'm happy to have any involvement from you all or any input that you may want to share with me throughout this process, and we're excited.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Leslie. Congratulations on your good work and leadership on this effort, and so we look forward to getting more details. Do we have any announcements this evening? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Garden in the Park is this weekend, Saturday from ten till three.
Okay, great.
And weather permitting, we will have it, and we will also have our River Rock Concert Series that evening at, at River Park.
Awesome. Should be a great weekend in the coolest small town in America. We'll move into our ten-minute public input. We have two members of the public signed up to speak. Call your name. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address clearly in the microphone for your comments. Mr. Taylor Swift. Steele? I'm sorry. Quite a difference there, so. Where's your guitar? Thank you, Taylor. Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Taylor Steele. I reside at twenty-five fourteen Fayetteville Road. Standing in front of you this evening to discuss several topics, specifically the Canton Housing Authority and Lytec Property. As you know, there are several of these properties that currently are sprinkled throughout Canton. We currently have Oakside Drive, Ship Street, and Jefferson Circle. Oakside Drive consisting of seventy-five units, Ship Street thirty-nine units, Jefferson Circle thirty-one units, collectively a hundred and forty-five units that the Canton Housing Authority owns and operates. As you all are well aware, as you passed the bill for the Lytec Property proposed tax credit last meeting for the thirty-three acres directly next to the new Cherokee High School, that's a proposed four-story building with another additional roughly ninety-five units. As you also probably know, our cities that comprise Cherokee County, Ball Ground, Holly Springs, Waleska, and Woodstock, and our beloved Canton. Out of all these cities, Canton is the only one that has a housing authority. The rest of these cities have zero housing authorities and zero public housing. While I understand the city and the body here feels empowered and pioneered to take the task and burden to provide housing to all of this constituents, fortunately, you know, we're getting the ones with all the responsibility here. We've taken the traffic congestion, the density, and that burden has shifted to all of us. As you might be aware, the survey from the twenty twenty-four constituents came out just the other week. The top twenty important things that were listed by the roughly twelve hundred and fifty people that responded to the survey was traffic congestion, number one, manage the growth and density of this city was number two, and keeping Canton's small-town feel. Also to note, number five on that list was minimizing property taxes. It's important to know on those top three, this body performed fifty-three percent poorly on managing traffic congestion, fifty-six percent poorly on managing growth and density, and roughly fifty-three percent poorly on managing and minimizing property taxes. I do want to point out, however, where it is positively noted. A Great Place to Raise Children scored seventy-two percent, and the police servicing led by Chief Marty Farrell did receive seventy-two percent positive noting. Nowhere in that top twenty was there any concern for Lytec property or any subsidized housing. It's clear that the constituents here in Canton aren't in favor of Lytec property. This continues to bring down property value despite what the Canton Housing Authority says, and it's unfathomable to believe that low-income housing is going to further contribute to the economic growth here in the immediate city where constituents have said keeping that small-town feel and the downtown growth in which many business owners here in the downtown area have expressed a major concern that their additional income is going to be spent right there, as there's probably not much disposable income left. Recently, it was made aware from Mr. Peppers that a ten million dollar from the ARPA fund was moved to the general fund to support the five hundred thousand dollar loan from this body to the Canton Housing Committee. Again, directly in contrast to what the constituents of this city feel is important. I just want to bring that to the attention of the public, make sure this body is well aware. I understand that there's been numerous requests from the Canton Housing Authority, and on the agenda tonight, as you may see listed under New Business, another proposal from the Housing Authority to create a Canton Land Trust. I want this body to be well aware and ensured that the constituents be entrusted in this body to make the decisions and best in price for this body to limit the power and restrict the Canton Housing Authority to make sure we have equal opportunity for all constituents in the city. As you're well aware, as we look at thirty-three acres for the property next to the hundred and eighty million dollar high school that was proposed and built, right? These are depleting resources. There's a difference between low-income housing and affordable housing. I agree, and I think we all agree, that we need more affordable housing here in the city. But as we deplete these resources, there's just not going to be enough land available. So I caution against a land trust and want this body to take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Thomas Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, and I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Thank you for recognizing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, and to the benefit of all whom are in attendance and council. I know that the city's administrative departments are currently working to finalize their budget request to our city manager, and I was always a very, I want to say, a very, very good proponent of the revitalization and for the city to reimagine the space regarding the historic gymnasium of the old L.R. Tippin School at the top of the hill. I know that's a gargantuan project, and I'm sure that bids are going to ring in at a very large seven-digit number, if I had to guess. All the asbestos and lead-based paint and all the other things that go into those old bones to breathe new life into what could be. And I would ask that, as the city council continues to march forward towards our budget this summer, and as you look over those bids that are going to be received and reviewed along with all of the different proposals from each of your department's staff, I would just ask that council please consider prioritizing that project. It's a big win for the city. Also, I wanted to make a remark regarding the Isotek fire this morning. I do believe that there was a fire at that facility. I'm glad everyone's okay. I don't know what type of chemicals were on fire or not, and I would ask that this, I would ask that Team Canton look into that, just to make sure there wasn't anything in there that could cause problems with our water, for example. I'm not, maybe not. I don't know. I'm just curious. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening. As usual, I'll read both of these items. If anyone would like one or both removed for further discussion, please let me know. Item A, approval of street acceptance for city maintenance for streets in River Green, Pod B for the retreat. And item B, approval of proposed reimbursement resolution. Anyone like any of those items removed? Mr. Waterman?
There are no comments. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for the motion. We will move into old business at this time with item A, discussion and possible action on the award of State Route Twenty, I five seventy-five Water Main Replacement Project to Soul Construction LLC in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So as presented in the first meeting of April, we have received three bids for this project, and the low bidder being Soul Construction. We have done work with them previously. They did the Lowell Canyon Booster Station, and they're currently doing the Brown Industrial Pump Booster Station, and we have really good experience with this contractor. So staff would recommend approval of this, SR Twenty Water Main Replacement Project to Soul Construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. I know we've discussed this previously, and again, just confirm, this is a large-ticket item, but it did come in much lower than anticipated or that was budgeted, so.
That is correct.
Okay. Any comments or any questions for Ms. Watson?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Roach?
I would like to make a motion to award the SR Twenty I five seventy-five Water Main Replacement Project to Soul Construction LLC in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for the motion. Related matter, item B, discussion and possible action on the Ward of Task Order Eight, Addendum Two for supplemental services for State Route Twenty, I five seventy-five Water Main Replacement for Construction Administration to Black and Beach in the amount of eighty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So as you said, this is in relation to the project that was just awarded. Black and Beach did the design work, and now we're asking them for a proposal on doing the construction services for this project, which includes monthly progress meetings, site visits, substantial and final completion inspections, reviewing shop drawings, and maintaining submit logs, responding to requests for information, change orders, and preparing record documents. Staff would recommend approval of this addendum.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Any questions for Ms. Watson or comments? Mr. Roach?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award Task Order Eight, Addendum Two for supplemental services for SR Twenty I five seventy-five Water Main Replacement for Construction Administration to Black and Beach in the amount of eighty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars. Second.
Of a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion and possible action on public art project at Heritage Park and Waleska Street Bridge. Ms. Green?
Good evening. As you have heard a couple of times, both Jamie Foster, the Chair of the Cultural Arts Commission, and then myself at your last meeting have presented on this project, which is a proposed sculpture project at Heritage Park on the trail on either side of the Waleska Street Bridge. Mr. Peppers asked that I give you a little bit of information about how the call for art will work. A call for artists or a call for art is essentially like a request for qualifications. So we will list all of our particular project specifications for the project, such as the location, you know, we're looking for a material that is durable as it's within the floodplain, and that park often gets flooded, so a durable material. You know, we will include a project budget because that helps the artist know if that is a worthwhile project for them to submit for, or if it's not. And we may have several different outcomes from this call for artists. So we may receive submissions from artists who have complete works. So they may say, here are these pictures of these works that I have done that we feel suit your needs, and we would like you to consider these already created projects for your project. We may also get some artists who say, we see what you want. This is our vision. This is what we can create for you that we feel goes along with your vision for the project. And this is my concept. This is what I will create. And then we may also have artists who say, here are my qualifications. These are the works that I have created before, the works that I've created in materials that are suitable for your project. You see my work here. Let me know if this is something that you're interested in. So in order for us to really run a successful call, we are asking if you're interested in the Cultural Arts Commission moving forward with this project. Number one, approving the location, but also giving us perhaps a not-to-exceed amount for the budget. As a reminder, we do have the twenty-five thousand dollar donation from a developer in the area that the Cultural Arts Commission is asking to utilize towards this project, and they would like your blessing to move forward with the project and hopefully also a not-to-exceed number for the total budget for the project.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. I think as we discussed the last meeting, this would be our first sculpture, I think, which would be an exciting addition to our public art portfolio. And the Public Art Master Plan did rate this location as a priority or a highly anticipated site for public art. So again, thank you for the work and thanks for the commission for their work on this. Any questions for Ms. Green? Ms. McGurk?
Will we be defining the budget tonight? I see that fifty-three thousand, fifty-three, yeah, thousand dollars is on your proposal. Are you wanting that approved tonight as well?
That was the Cultural Arts Commission's high-end range. I think when Jamie presented, she said between twenty thousand and fifty thousand. You know, and what we are willing to spend for the project will inform the quality of the submissions that we do get. The Cultural Arts Commission has been building a really nice, quality, public art library, if you will. And just as a little bit of a frame of reference, the two murals that we have done most recently, our Parking Deck mural, as well as the mural in Sunnyside, cost about twenty thousand dollars apiece. So if you could give us a not-to-exceed amount, as well as the blessing to go ahead with that project, then that would help us with the call. If we publish that call at whatever dollar amount you decide we should begin with, and we don't receive any submissions that the selection committee is pleased with, then we're not under any obligation to move forward on the project.
One of the questions that had been asked of me was to see if I could find some more information about the sculptures that were done as part of the Simpler Development. So Simpler developed Canton Marketplace, and there was a requirement for public art as a portion of that. They did provide the city a hundred thousand dollars that went into four sculptures. Two were at Brown Park, one is in Cannon Park, and one is the mill worker at the sign coming into downtown. So four sculptures, a hundred thousand dollars, about twenty-five thousand dollars apiece. Now, understanding the mill worker probably cost more than one of the other sculptures, but the average was about twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, and that was twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, just as a, just as an idea.
Yeah, it was quite a while ago, and I believe those sculptures are bronze. So again, it's our first sculpture commissioned, so we don't know what the cost will be, and I think it's kind of hard for us. Now, we do know we have twenty-five thousand dollars committed toward this, and so I think being able to start there would be a great place to start. But I'm open to your thoughts on this. Mr. Tolan?
A couple of things. Ms. Green, thanks for bringing this to us. So to be clear, that fifty-three thousand dollar high end includes the twenty-five that's already been committed?
That would include the twenty-five thousand dollars, so twenty-five thousand dollars perhaps from the developer, twenty-five, twenty-eight for the city to contribute. And really, that additional three thousand dollars is based on just some quick estimates that we received for site work and concrete paths.
And then going back a few, a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, we do have Mr. Peppers' commitment on large capital projects to set aside two percent for art. Do we, I know that there's one in the works, and that's the new South Canton Park. Are there other projects that might help fund the art commission?
Not, not any that we have cost estimates on, so to speak. We have, we have some projects that are in design, but we actually know what the budgets are on those.
Got it. And what, remind me, what is the, what's the, what do we anticipate the cost is going to be of the capital side of that project?
On the South Canton Park?
Yes, sir.
Seven million, maybe a little bit more than seven million. Now, I will say in that particular project, there are a couple of parks of that project that we have asked to be designed as art within that park using those funds.
Using a hundred and, potentially a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
Within the park, yes.
Okay. And are we committed to spending that money in the park?
The idea originally, as I understood it, was that when the city did capital projects, the idea is that when possible, the art would be related to that particular capital project.
Understood. So I'm just trying to figure out if there are monies coming in or that might be soon committed that we might earmark for this additional twenty-eight thousand dollars potentially. But we don't know, we don't know at this point.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. McGurk?
Do I hear you correctly that you would rather not have a defining budget this evening?
No, I didn't say that necessarily. I do think, again, we haven't done this before. I said, you know, we have, we know that we have twenty-five thousand committed. So at least, I'm certainly comfortable and supportive of starting there. I don't want to put any extra commission on, any extra work on the half of the commission, but if we started there and see what we, what we did get for that would be a place to start. Or, I mean, I think in all items related, if you say, hey, we have this much to spend, I think the proposal is going to come in close to that. But, but again, I do support investing in, if we're investing in public art, investing in the highest quality, so.
In this day and age, a sculpture is going to be more expensive than twenty-three thousand dollars.
I agree.
So I, I think that we need to seriously think about putting the amount of money as a definition that's been recommended by staff that the art commission says that it will cost. And surely, it may not come in that much, but at least we'll have a budget.
Exactly. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on. So as I'm thinking through this, if this is, you know, one of the first that we're doing, there's a donation of twenty-five thousand dollars. I would much rather see proposals because I don't know what a, what a cap should be on a budget for a project like this. Total cost of project says fifty-three thousand dollars. I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable, while I, while I think it's important, I don't feel comfortable giving a budget up to that amount. So I would much rather see proposals. That's just my opinion.
Proposals for twenty-five thousand or?
Or they're accepting proposals for, to place these, these sculptures, right? Is, correct? Mr. Mayor?
I think the request is, two parts of the request, if I understand correctly, is one, you know, approval for the project and the location, and then two, a request if we wanted to define a budget tonight to do that, so. Could we also possibly do a call, I know it's helpful to include a budget, but based on the concepts we see, you know, based on budgets and what the commission recommends of committing to the budget at that time based on the submissions?
I'm happy to do whatever makes you feel most comfortable. You know, as has been mentioned, we've never done a call for sculpture before. So we don't have to accept anything. I'm happy to run the call, and if we don't receive any submissions for the particular dollar amount that we have to invest at the moment, then we can reevaluate. I'm happy to do that either way.
Mr. Mayor, could we, could we ask for two, two scenarios? One, up to twenty-five thousand dollars, and what, what would it look like if you had an art project that was between, say, twenty-five and fifty-five, or fifty thousand dollars? Is that, is that something, and I don't, you probably don't know what you don't know at this point, is that reasonable, I guess?
I feel like if we're going to ask for scenarios, we're asking for people to price, what's your best twenty-five thousand? What can we get for twenty-five thousand dollars, right? That's, I think that's what that will bring. Ultimately, we're empowering you to make the decision on the quality and everything, because I know nothing about art, okay? But I just feel comfortable, as far as the, the location and, I'm fine with that, but as far as the dollar amount?
far as the dollar amount, I would feel more comfortable if we saw some other proposals. That's just.
Sure. I'm happy to do that.
I think, I'm on board for it. I love it. I like the idea. I just, it's just that one part for me.
Could the call say, list a target, you know, budget of twenty-five thousand dollars or, you know, a range closer, you know, approximately, but?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do you have to set a budget? I mean, I guess, I mean, I know, I understand where it's located. It's going to have to be a pretty strong material, which obviously, anything that's heavier usually costs more. But, I mean, is that something that you have, I mean, because you might get somebody, if you didn't set a budget, that comes in at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per, and then you're like, well, is it gold or, you know? But then again, you may have somebody that comes in that has the material that we're looking for, and it's in that twenty-five thousand dollar range.
We don't know until we try.
Right.
And I'm sorry, did we decide, because we did discuss this last time, if they were going to be fixed in that position?
They will be.
Were they not going to be moved? Okay.
Ms. Speaker?
Ms. Green, would not having a limit on the money prohibit an artist from making a proposal for a piece of art that is in scale to that area? I don't want to get, I mean, if it's going to limit us to a statue the size of a parrot when we actually need the size of, you know, a giraffe, that's going to be affected, do you think?
You know, I'm not sure. It, you could have an artist who wouldn't consider a project for a twenty-five thousand dollar budget, two sculptures at twenty-five thousand dollars. But then you could have an artist who's really amazing, who's maybe at the beginning of their career, and for them, this could be a huge opportunity. So, you know, we can publicize it everywhere that we can, and what we get is what we get, and if we're not pleased with any of those options, then we can certainly bring it back for reevaluation.
Can I make one comment? And maybe this is more of a question. Would it be feasible to do a call and say, we have a goal of two sculptures. We really don't know what that's going to look like. We know that we've got the following budget. Can you give us a proposal to do one with the option to add a second one at a growing budget? Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
And that way, because I don't think what you would want is you, I don't think you would want an artist taking twenty-five thousand dollars and trying to do two sculptures out of it when they really need twenty-five thousand dollars to do one good one, and it could be something that's phased. So, you get one, and maybe you add the second one down the road, or you get a proposal, and they say, hey, we can go ahead and do the second one, and this is what the cost is, because we're already going to be on site, or this is the material we're using. And that would at least give you an idea of what you're getting per sculpture and get you started. Does that, does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Because I kind of hear council talking about a sculpture, but it's really two sculptures.
I'd like to make a, forgot my word. A motion, thank you. With all this money floating around, I forgot my word. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a call for art with a budget of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? Mr. Yon?
I'm wondering, I liked your idea of, we want two sculptures, we have this budget. Can you do one for this, or what can you do for this? And then, say, if you can only do one, what could you do? Give us a concept, and then we get, like you say, we get a better idea, leave it more open. Because I know human nature, if you tell people you only have fifty thousand dollars, everybody's going to want fifty thousand dollars, and everybody will scale the project to that. So, in order to open it up for a little more creativity, a little more options, I think that's probably a good way to put it out there for one sculpture. We want two. Tell us what you can do if this is our range. That's what I'm thinking.
The only thing I was going to add is, my suggestion for council based around the way the arts policy is written is, you're basically saying, this location is fine right now, the city's willing to commit the twenty-five thousand dollars that's been donated. It's up to this group to decide if it's one sculpture, two sculptures, how that's done.
Yeah, I was going to say, with the motion that's on the table, which I support, basically, we're good with the project, we're good with the sculpture, we're good with the money that's committed, and trust the commission to do their job and do their work. And then, if we need to revisit based on what you give back to the commission from the call, then we can certainly do that, and it's kind of, hey, this is what you're going to get, and this is what it's going to cost you. It's a lot easier to make a decision around that, so.
And nothing precludes them from trying to find sponsors.
No, I think, again, it's the first time we're doing it. We'll learn, as we did on the murals. You know, we had our first one, and then we had questions, and we got better on the second one and the third one, and I assume we'll learn more on, when it comes to sculpture from this project as well, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All of you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Green.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Item D, discussion and possible action to install an interactive kiosk in Cannon Park. Mr. Hatavian?
Last meeting, I presented the kiosk for approval for installation. Everything else has been taken care of. I know there were several questions that I responded to. I'm not sure if everyone saw those questions and responses or not. What we've got up there is kind of a rendering of what it would look like. Not exactly that. I mean, I think we'd have to, in talking with Jay Kula as far as ADA goes, have the base even with the sidewalk, but other than that, that's pretty much what we're looking at. And, you know, Public Works is going to do some of the work. We may have to get a contractor for the pad or something, but we're just ready to go.
I think it was discussed, again, the cost for the kiosk itself is coming from Main Street, correct?
Yes.
And, but then, I guess the content and all, we're looking at our communications team to?
Yeah, it would all be through the communications department with the city. There is no third-party involvement for anything to do with the content.
Okay. And then, we'll be asking our Public Works to do the installation and maintenance.
They're just doing the installation of the pad and the power. The kiosk vendor is going to do the actual install.
Okay. Other questions? Noah has been discussing the possibility of, since, it's in the city park and on city property, and staff would be involved in, you know, doing the content and installation and all of that is a possibility, the city purchasing the kiosk and equipment, since they would have ownership of that, and basically having the Main Street just reimburse the city for?
Yeah, it'll be ultimately the city's kiosk. What we envisioned on the interactive screen would be like a directory, a map, and, what else we had? Like, three items, but we didn't really anticipate any advertising unless that was something that anyone wanted to consider later on down the road. I think it was, let me see if I had this right. Interactive map, a directory, and an event schedule is what we envisioned initially to be on that screen.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for Mr. Hatavian?
I don't have for Mr. Hatavian. For Mr. Pepper's, you had mentioned a couple of days ago about there being some lingering questions. Have those questions been resolved?
They have. And really, the only thing that's kind of outstanding to me is, I think, from a procurement standpoint and based upon the warranty, it might be cleaner for the city to actually pay to buy, install under a city contract, and then just bill Main Street for their portion of it afterwards. And that way, we at least get, we make sure the warranties are in the right name, if there's any questions with the installation, everybody's there at the same time. You know, if there's any contacts that are necessary based upon the contract, it's going to be the people who are actually doing the work on it as opposed to a potential board member, so.
I believe that's kind of what we've envisioned moving forward with Main Street, is changing the way the procurement process works, similar to some of the other boards. Just as an FYI, we do have all their W nine and their vendor packet already, so.
Sean?
I do have a couple of technical kind of questions. I guess we would get more information from the vendors. We got close to being, is about security, number one, how its access to be changed, and I understand staff would be in charge of that. Is it remote, Wi-Fi, physically plug-in, you know, that kind of thing? And also, would it be lit full brightness twenty-four seven?
So, that was some of the questions that we asked. It has an auto-on, auto-off feature, so you can have it set on a timer so that it goes off at a certain time.
It's got a sleep mode as well. And power saver.
And like anything else, we'll look on dimming and things like that. It's going to be one of those things that you just have to play with after it's up and operational.
Those are my main questions.
And that's part of the reason why I'd want the city more on the front end of the installation part, is, you know, making sure our IT department feels comfortable with the networking and the security around the networking and all of that, so.
Mr., I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Did I hear you just say that it will have a sleep mode?
Yes.
So, when you walk up to it, if it's asleep, you just need to touch the screen?
I believe that's the way it works, yeah. Yeah, I think it's set up on a timer. It's either a sleep mode, power saver, however it works, but I think there's several ways you can do it, so it's not, you know, bright twenty-four seven.
I'm sure there'll be some sort of signage on it that says touchscreen, too.
I would imagine, yeah.
To do what? Do whatever. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
If there aren't, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Ms. Tolan?
I move that we approve the action to install the interactive kiosk in Cannon Park.
Second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members present voted for the motion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hatavian. Item E, discussion and possible action to approve a Waste Pro's request to amend the city's agreement for solid waste collection services. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Please recall that at the last meeting, I brought forward a proposal from Waste Pro to amend their current contract and extend it for three additional years. We're approaching the end of the initial three-year term on September thirtieth of this year. And in doing that, what they were proposing is to set the first year's increase to two point five percent. Recall, in the contract, it says that they will use, we will use the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for waste services as of June thirtieth of each year to set the increase. So, they were proposing just to limit it to two point five percent, because I gave you all the numbers at the last meeting. It was five point something percent CPI currently. Well, council asked, said, would you all be amenable to setting that at two point five percent all three years of the contract? Well, they've answered, and they said, sure, we'll do that. One caveat, though, is they're not capping it at two point five percent. They're going to go ahead and set it at two point five percent. So, what they're proposing to the council, if you all are amenable to it, is that they will go ahead and set the increase each September thirtieth of each year of the three-year contract at two point five percent. Now, I'll say this again, and I shared this with council last, at the last meeting. Historically, the CPI has always been above two point five percent. So, take that for what it is, but I think that's probably a very favorable deal for the city of Canton and its residents and customers.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. We tend to agree, and I appreciate them being willing to set that cap at two point five for the extension of the contract. Again, we discussed, we've been through transition to services and contractors before. We don't know what a nightmare it is, and we've known from historically, at least since I've been on council, I know, Ms. McGrew also served on the sanitation committee once or twice, that we've gone through that in the past, and we're always not happy with what comes back. There's always higher costs and greater demands, so I don't expect that that innovation is going to come in the next three years to that industry profession. So, we do appreciate Waste Pro's willingness to do that, and also the, you know, the increase, the market increase we've seen in quality of service as well, so, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ingram or other comments? Ms. McGrew?
Motion to extend the concert, contract with Waste Pro for an additional two years.
Three years.
Three years.
Oh, sorry, three years.
Second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? All members voted for the motion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Ms. Ingram. Moving to new business at this time, and I believe new business items are for discussion only tonight. No action is being asked. Item A, discussion of the Canton Housing Team recommendation that the city council approve the creation of the Canton Community Land Trust. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm back again to discuss the possibility of the creation of Canton Community Land Trust. This has been presented to the city council previously. There have been additional discussions at retreats with the council members, staff, basically myself, Mr. Pepper's, Mr. Dyer also had meetings in regards to the Canton Community Land Trust and how it would be established, set up, that sort of thing. But a community land trust is a nonprofit, community-based organization, acquires, owns, and stewards land permanently for the common good. Community land trusts are best known for providing affordable homeownership opportunities that last generations. They do this by retaining ownership of the land and selling houses or entering into contracts with the people to build on lots as a part of the development. In exchange for below-market prices, purchasers agree to resell restrictions that ensures that the homes stay in an affordable state over a longer period of time, allows lower-income households to build wealth through homeownership. This is not low-income tax credit housing. This is workforce-affordable housing. I did email out to the council members as requested, a couple of tables that give some comparisons and, between land banks, community land trusts, that sort of thing. The housing team did unanimously recommend the council consider creating the community land trust. In the attachments, I did give an example of the articles of incorporation for the land trust. Also provided a initial draft of Canton Development Regulations, which would serve almost like covenants for the association on an individual project, so that the land trust board of directors would serve one function. They would also be on the board of the Development Association as well. I'm here to answer any questions any of you might have in regards to the community land trust or land banks. If you want me to go through the tables individually, I can certainly. If you want me to go through the tables individually, I can certainly do that.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Appreciate that, and thank you for sending out the, the tables and, and on the land bank versus land trust. And I don't think unless someone else requests that we need to go through both of those tables in detail. But again, could you just for the sake of the public differentiate between land bank and land, land trust? And what's been a, a kind of adopted by the county and?
Well, the land bank basically is, is an organization that almost serves like a real estate agency. And their main purpose is to stabilize and revitalize vacant, abandoned, deteriorated properties. They put it back into the market for redevelopment or a development if it's a vacant piece of property that increases the tax base. The community land trust does hold the land in perpetuity and does leasehold leases similar to Corps of Engineers properties around Lake Alatuna, Lake Lanier. I think Georgia Power also has some leasehold properties on some of their lakes as well. The land bank is a public entity, if you will. It's defined by state statute and local ordinance. The land trust is a private nonprofit, if you will. Property acquisition for the land bank is through special acquisition powers via state enabling legislation. There's no special acquisition powers associated with the community land trust. Property disposition, the land bank would sell the property in a diligent but yet expedited manner for a flexible price to achieve the best outcome for the community. The land trust basically would work with owners and sell structures, if you will, or enter into contracts. The land trust could have a, an agreement with a local develop, developer builder to build projects and product for the land trust for purchase by residents.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
One thing I would ask, Mr. Dyer, if I should prepare a resolution to create the land trust, bring back to the city council.
Start with that question. I, I don't think so, because I think all you're really doing is approving ti, the use of time and, and, and to pay me to help with that. Because there, we'll have to create it and bring it back to you, or figure out who's going to be the board of directors. So there's still things to be decided on that. So I think just your direction, that you want to go that way, that we do want to use that, that vehicle. I did want to explain a little bit about the land bank, because I think it will clear up a little bit about that. So the land bank is statutory, so there's, there's a land bank law that, that says this is how land banks operate. One of the, so it specifically says the land bank can go to a tax sale, but they can only bid at a tax sale up to the costs and the taxes owed. That's the maximum they can bid. So they don't bid fair market. They, they, so they're only going to buy properties at a tax sale that nobody else wants, and that's the purpose of it. It is, it is to clear up properties that are either so deteriorated, nobody wants to buy them in a tax sale because of the cost of clearing it, or the taxes have gotten so high because the tax commissioner hadn't acted quickly enough, or, or you have title problems. And so people stop paying their taxes, because the land bank has the power to wipe out all the taxes. So it takes a property that's sitting there useless and wipes out the taxes as if, and if that's the only barrier, now it's a developable, marketable piece of property. So we don't have a lot of properties like that in Cherokee County. Their properties sold on the tax sales first Tuesday of every month. So there are not a whole lot of tangled messes that you need a land bank to intervene in. The land bank can also receive property if somebody donated it to them or whatever. The biggest difference, I think, between land bank and land trust is this thing we've talked about, and I mentioned several times, is if you're trying to control the affordability of the property going forward, you can't do that through a land bank. You can do that through a land trust. So in fact, a land bank might acquire properties and transfer it to a land trust, if that's the goal. But the land bank disposes of properties, and it's a committee made up of all municipalities, and the, and the group has to approve how to dispose of it. So it can have lots of different purposes. It's, I know it's been talked about for affordability. That's one purpose. The other might just be to get property into the market, to clean it up for this tax problem and just put it in to, to the market for a market development. So they're not con, they're not contradictory. They're, they could be complementary. But the land trust solves the issue of, great, we made it be affordable at first, but then two years later, they sell it for market, and now it's not affordable anymore. So the land trust is how we achieve affordability, however you define that.
Right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Dyer. Mr. Rooks?
Mr. Patton, could you give a couple of examples on the resale, the resale restrictions?
The.
That been established, or, I mean, that, that's just kind of what I'm thinking is.
Well, the, the Atlanta Land Trust sets a, and it's in the documents, it's closing on the front end, and purchasers are aware on the front end. But they set a five percent maximum appreciated value realization plus the exact dollar amount of any improvements that that homeowner made on that structure.
Okay.
It seems to be kind of a standard nationwide is that there's a limit of five percent for the appreciated value. That's how it maintains affordability over a longer period of time.
And then, and you can then also impose the, the income requirements as ever, you know, ninety percent of what median income, whatever.
So I guess the income requirements would be important, because you, you don't want these things to, like you said, own it for two years, and then they sell it to an investor. You know, that gets, just going to buy it and, you know, rent it, or.
Right, and.
And that's as long as we can, you know, figure out a way to not have that in it.
Because it would be even worse if you just said, you can't sell it, you can only sell it for this much, but somebody else come by, that's a deal. So you got to, you got to restrict who the buyer is.
Correct.
And, and you're going to restrict who that buyer is going forward.
And that buyer will be fee simple.
No, it's a lease, actually. So that's, that's.
They're leasing the land.
That's how we're able to put in these restrictions. It'll be in a lease agreement.
On the land, the land itself, but for the.
They would have a loan from a lender for the construction of the residential unit. But, you know, within the Development Association, it's almost like HOA dues, if you will, the leasehold. It's a very minimal amount of, for a monthly payment.
Right, so you're leasing the land, but you're buying and financing and building a, a structure.
Right, so it's, it's a long, it's a long-term lease, so fifty years or more that banks and everybody else will accept as being basically fee simple.
Right.
Because it's a long-term, it's what Mr. Patton mentioned, the Georgia Power lakes. I mean, nobody owns those, the, the land around those lakes, so.
But they, they'll pay to have the house constructed, correct? And I guess anything can happen. The economy could go bad. What happens when they don't make their payment? And so.
You mean the bank?
Correct.
The bank forecloses just like normal.
Okay.
There's a foreclosure sale, but it's got these restrictions of lease.
Got the restrictions.
In the lease. Because basically, when you buy it, you're basically taking assignment of the lease.
Right.
Mr. Tull?
Mr. Patton, remind us, I know the answer, but please, for the benefit of the public, remind us of one of the biggest reasons why communities adopt a community land trust for affordability.
Well, with a community land trust, if you will, they own and retain ownership of the land. It removes the land cost out of the construction equation on construction of homes. And the land costs generally, on average, run twenty, twenty-five percent of the cost of a home.
Okay, so we have a project that we're considering north of town. Do you, Mr. Dyer, do you think that that would be a good project to implement a land trust on?
That, that's ultimately up to you, but any, any land, yes.
I mean, to, to, we've been struggling for months now about affordability with that.
Right, you, and you've indicated with the, the voting, that you did know what your priorities are. Affordability was one of the goals of that project. And so I, I think this, this is the solution to the affordability question, because I have wondered all along, how are you going to keep that resale from being market? Because why go through all this if the person buys it affordably and then can sell it for market? So land trust is where we can achieve that through the lease.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we adopt a community land trust, it's just the vehicle. We have the vehicle at our disposal to use on project A, B, or C, correct? We're, we're not, we're not committing that the city is suddenly a land trust city, that we do everything into a land trust.
Correct. One thing that we haven't really talked through is who, who's going to be the board of directors? So it could be you, it could be staff members, it could be the housing authority. I mean, there's lots of people that can be. And so it may be that you say, well, we love, love that idea, but we're not going to be the land trust owners.
Yeah.
You know, here's who we want to do it. So it's, it's really just your blessing to go forward with it. And come back with a proposal, because we might think, talk about it and say, well, why would the city want to be that? Why would the city council want to be that? Let's figure out who is going to be that. And then, as we move forward, we might separate out each project, could have its own land trust, and you could have the owners be the directors for that land trust.
And that's part of why in the, the attachments, I included that first draft of what was titled Canton Development Association Bylaw that would be created for each development project that the land trust might undertake.
And I'm sort of envisioning an umbrella land trust that just sort of gets it going, and then.
Creates a tool, but then it'd be property or project specific as far as that.
We decide, we decide who's going to, who's going to actually own the land forever.
Right.
Is it going to be this land trust? Are we going to create another one?
In, in the discussions with Mr. Peppers and Mr. Dyer, we did have the discussion of the Canton Housing Authority Board possibly serving as the Canton Community Land Trust Board of Directors. I do know that the chairman of that board and the executive director of the Housing Authority both seem to be amenable to that option, if that's the way the city council would want to proceed.
So, Mr. Mayor, one, one other thing, and I, I promise I'll shut up. It, it seems that if we are, if we have the intestinal fortitude, or whatever you want to call it, to adopt a community land trust, that we will be checking at least two boxes, leading with excellence and creating great neighborhoods. So I, I, I hope, and I won't be here at the next meeting, I hope this council will approve it and move forward. So again, to reiterate, it is just a tool. It'll be a tool that we have in our arsenal, like we have all the other tools in our arsenal that we don't necessarily have to use on every project, but we have it available without it. You know, we're talking about another twenty, twenty-five percent cost. So we would be leading with excellence. We would be creating great neighborhoods, like we're creating Tanner Place, like we will be creating Oakside. Those hundred and forty-five units are going to be a shining example in the county. Mr. Steele mentioned that Canton is the only city in the county to have a housing authority, and we're pretty proud of that. And we're going to be even more proud when those units are brand new and people can live in dignity, live with dignity, and hopefully pull themselves out of whatever situation that they have, based on wraparound services, that we're going to be partnering with the Gainesville Housing Authority. All sorts of really, really good things coming to the Canton Housing Authority, and I applaud their work and the work that the council has done to get them to this point.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, so, so, I've been thinking, as we've been talking, Mr. Patton's question about a resolution. Maybe what makes sense is, you say, bring us something. Where we like the idea, bring us something. And the resolution we could bring back would have some of the details. Like, we want to use a land trust for this, this income range, or whatever, just some details about the affordability rules. Would that make sense to, for us to do that?
I believe so, I mean, and, and again, for clarification, we just had this as a discussion item this evening, which is what we're doing, so. And I don't think there was a timeframe, hey, we're going to have that by the next.
No.
Meeting. I don't think that's doable, but I think we're just.
Not if we're going to put some detail on it.
We're moving closer to that, but I mean, for us to prove something, we'd have to know what those details were, so.
I, I think Mr. Patton is looking for the go-ahead to.
Yeah, I mean, I believe we're all interested in looking what you may bring back and, and, you know, having those additional tools to, to work with on, Mr. Tull mentioned, you know, a project that, that we've been trying to figure out how to make it economically work. And, and this could be another tool to be able to do that. But, but I think as far as specifics, yeah, we need to have a resolution or something to kind of.
We'll bring back the specifics.
While we're approving, but.
And then you could say, yes, no, yes, no, but, yes, we'd have a, some, something with some meat on it.
Does that make sense to everyone, so? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Appreciate your ongoing work. Item B, discussion of the Ward of Aspect on the River Vault install to Cummins Enterprises in the amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you. So as you may or may not know, there is a pretty large water line that runs along the Etowah River on the north side. And Aspect on the River's vault is connected there right below our new trail. Unfortunately, over the years, erosion has caused that vault to be suspended in the air, and it's, needs to be moved. In order to keep it out of the river, we have proposed putting the vault on the, what is the name of that street?
Anderson.
Anderson Avenue?
Name of the street.
Anderson Avenue.
Anderson Avenue, on Anderson Avenue there, behind the Hardee's. We have received three bids or quotes for this project, and Cummins Enterprises has come in at the low quote amount of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-seven cents. I will say that if this vault were to break away, it would not only put the apartments out of water for a significant amount of time, but it also would be very hard for the city to repair that main, given the, the location. And I'll be happy to answer any more questions you have.
Thank you, Ms., Ms. Watson, and I know it is somewhat of a concerning situation. And I guess I, I suppose you would bring back a, an action I'm at the next meeting, but given the, the situation, and I mean, is there any, any fear of that failing within the next two weeks before the next meeting, or?
Um, I mean, it's always.
Any recommendations to, to move forward on this, this evening, but given the?
So the apartment still has to move their lines as well to the actual vault, so. And as far as I'm aware, they have not started any of that work. So even once we get this vault installed, they still have work that they are going to need to do as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, discussion of the Ward of Task Order Seven, Addendum Two, for supplemental services for Ridge Pine Elevated Tank and Booster Pump Station for Construction Administration to Blacken Beach in the amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Thank you. So we have been working on the design of the South Canton Water Tank to replace the Ridge Pine Elevated Tank in South Canton. And we have put this project out to bid, and we have received bids back. The original scope for the design did not include supplemental services for Construction Administration. And for a project of this type, we, we definitely need pretty robust construction management. The, just, just so you're aware, the tank contracts come in, came in at a low bid of around fourteen million. So it is, like I said, a very large construction project, and staff does recommend having the construction management. and staff does recommend having the construction management services as listed in the scope. In this proposal, it will include pre-construction conference, easement acquisition, site visits, submittals and RFIs, testing and startup, punch lists and final inspections, operations trainings for our H2O partners, monthly reports, project admin, construction quality assurance, among other items. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I believe it also covers the decommission of the old tank and that as well, so.
That is correct, yes.
Any questions from Ms. Watson? Item D, discussion of approval for Task Order Thirteen to Blacken Beach for Canton's Water System Master Plan Project in the amount of four hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So back in 2018, Blacken Beach completed our original water master plan, as required by the Metro North Georgia Planning, Nor, Metro North Georgia Water Planning District. We're required to update our plan every five years. In addition to the main items that they look at in a water master plan, we've also asked that they look at, do a water supply evaluation, as well as an evaluation of our water treatment facilities, which are also included in this master plan. The water supply elevate, evaluation will include a safe yield analysis of the reservoir that will help us with determining some information about our new water treatment plant, if we were to do a new plant. And then the water treatment facilities plant, planning will look at our capacity needs, our water quality goals, and then facility upgrades or new facility. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Watson? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item E, discussion of proposed tax allocation district agreement between the city and Cherokee County. Ms. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm sure you recall, and I'll say this for the benefit of the public as well, but if you recall, in December of 2021, the city council established by resolution the Tax Allocation District Number One, damp for the downtown and Etowah River corridor. All along, even since the adoption of that resolution, we have been set out to gain support from the county and quite possibly, and eventually even the Board of Education. Because as of January first of 2022, we established a baseline on the property that's within the TAD boundaries. All of the tax generated from appreciation of value after that base goes into what's called the increment. And so, again, we've wanted to work with the county to have them onboard so that they would contribute their increment into this TAD to promote, promote redevelopment and development within this TAD boundary. So we've been working on that for quite a while, we've had a lot of discussions with the county. Mr. Dyer, of course, has been instrumental in those discussions, and preparing what you have in front of you today is a copy of a TAD agreement with the county. Still working, hopefully working with the Board of Education on something further down the road. But you have that agreement in front of you. As I read it, and of course, I'm not an attorney, but as I read it, one of the things I wanted to make sure of is, the resolution that you adopted in December of 2021, we established a tax allocation district for thirty years. It's, it's section four of that resolution. So I just want to make sure that the agreement that we enter into with the county, and I've read it again and again, and I think, I think it's okay, but I want to make sure that it would still be amenable and still allow for a thirty-year financing, if we so choose to do that, not saying we will.
I, I think with city portion, as drafted, the county portion would, it defines it as twenty years or the end of the initial financing period, which we call twenty years in this agreement.
Yeah, that's the initial financing period, so. And I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, and it's something that certainly Mr. Dyer and I, and Mr. Peppers and the county can work on, but that's the initial financing period, and then later on, it talks about fifteen years, but it, expense is already incurred. So I would like to work on, work with Mr. Dyer and Mr. Peppers and the county on, on clarifying that item. But you have a copy in front of you, it's something that we've worked on for a long time. We're not asking for action tonight, but I would certainly hope and appreciate any comments that you have, questions that you have that we can get answered, and we'll continue to iron out the details and hopefully have something back by June fifth, maybe, for your approval, if that's possible.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram, and I appreciate the hard work and the conversations and the county's willingness to collaborate on, on the TAD. Of course, we're just getting this and, and need time to review it, which we will. I believe it is in there, but I just want to confirm that the county is, is willing to, for the TAD agreement to, to be, go back to 2021 as well, when we adopted that, so they both start at the same time.
That's correct, Mayor.
On increments, okay.
The tax commissioner has actually been collecting the increment.
Okay, awesome.
And, and the city's already established a, a TAD fund where we're accumulating the city's portions right now. And of course, if this goes through, we will take the county's and, and that's where they will be deposited and held until that time to be used toward projects within the TAD.
Awesome. It certainly would help us in our goals, and especially with upcoming projects with the counties, such as the North Sea Project. It's, I think it's critical to make sure we have this agreement in place prior to any decisions on that as well, so. Any questions from Mr. Dyer on this? Mr. Phil?
One, one question. Mr. Ingram, not to put you on the spot, but how are we doing in terms of accumulating dollars into the, into the TAD over the last four years? Are we on track from where we thought we might be, or close to it?
Well, I believe the TAD is going to generate, the appreciation's going to be a lot less at the beginning. You know, there's, toward the end of the twenty or thirty years, year period, we could see two million dollars every year. But right now, you put me on the spot, how much? I think it's about a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars that are in the TAD funds right now. And, and of course, next year, budgeting, especially if we get the county onboard, you know, that, that will be possibly three hundred thousand or more.
So most TADs tend to load funding on the back end of the agreement?
They, and that's one of the reasons why they're, they're intended to have financing with, because of that reason.
The only increment is just from general property values going up.
Sure.
It's only after you build projects, that's the idea.
So for example, the new apartment project that's being built down at the Mill was not around when the TAD was first set up. So the only thing that was coming in off that land was the land value at the time. Once all the vertical construction is completed down there, every bit of its tax increment above that land cost will go into the TAD.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Item F, discussion of proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city downtown development authority and Cherokee County for the development of a multi-use project along North Street. Ms. Ingram?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Mr. Peppers to assist me on this. I wish we had an IGA draft to share with council. Right now, we've been working even as late as earlier today, and, and yesterday evening, we had a meeting with the county manager and staff to try and iron out some of these details as it relates to the IGA for the North Street project. I know that there's a lot of individuals, certainly the county, they're excited to get some shovels in the ground on the project, but we're trying to take our time and, and iron out these details in the order that they need to be ironed out. But the IGA that we're hoping to set up with the, the county, hopefully we'll have something for you to look at in more detail by the June fifth meeting. But as of right now, we're, we're still trying to, we've, we've got to work out the financing deals with the county on, you know, what portions they're going to be responsible for, what portions the DDA and the city's going to be responsible for. And, and certainly, there's some, going to be some land changes, because, you know, some of the projects from the county are going to be sitting on city property now, or DDA property. And then certainly, some of the projects that we may want to do, you know, may infringe on there. So we had to iron out some of those property details as well. Mr. Pepper, any, anything to add?
I was just going to say, the biggest thing that we've been trying to work on with the county over the last week or so is exactly how much square footage they need now, and what control they want of the design over their square footage. And so we feel like we're in a little bit better conversation than we were two weeks ago with them. We've got some basic bullet points that we, both parties are agreeing to, and so we're trying to get that worked out into an, into an agreement format for you.
Okay. Well, we know it's a, a big and important project, and, and look forward to looking at that agreement in, in greater details, but appreciate everyone on our staff and our team, and the, the county as well. We're coming together to, to solve multiple issues on those problems, so. Any other comments on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Peppers?
Just a couple of announcements for you tonight. You do have a copy of the operations report at your seat, that will also be on the city's website. That is information related to the city's operations from April. We did receive bids back on the Tippins Gym Project. That came in last week, and so staff has started working on the evaluation and review of those. I believe we received four bids, and the range on those, three of the bids were in the lower end. They were in the one million range, and then there was one bid that was probably around in the four million range. So staff's looking at those to try to figure out, you know, how, how they rank completely, and we'll be bringing you further information about that. One item that I did want to ask for your assistance on, at the last meeting, you received information from Mr. Patton about the concepts from Keckenwood on that school site. Keckenwood needs to finalize those concepts so that they can finish out their, their task order, which is finalize concepts and construction cost estimates. So if you have any comments on those that you would like to share with me, or share with Mr. Patton, so that we can get that figured in, we'd like to be able to close out their contract as, 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 as soon as possible. We did have an incident at Isotek yesterday. It is a lingering incident, basically, that occurred last week. So last week, there was an interior spillage of chemicals within a vessel at that particular plant, so it never, it never got out of the vessel, it was contained. But there was a chemical reaction that occurred. They had hired a firm to come in and clean that up. And yesterday, when, yesterday morning, when the firm was working on that cleanup, a water-based product was interactive with a, with a product that cannot have water, and that caused some additional chemical reactions. There was not a fire, nothing got outside of the building. There was some smoke and steam off of the, off of the project, but it was contained. Cherokee County Fire Police Department responded, cordoned off the area, reached out to the Environmental Protection Agency, Environmental Protection Division. We didn't have anything that left the site, didn't leave the building. And we had staff that were on-site through the evening, patrolling, making sure everything was good, and they continued to monitor. Our city's fire marshal did reach out to the company with some recommendations while they're working on some things. The fire department will do an, an incident report, an investigation on the actual event. So I'm not going to say anything else until they get their investigation done, basically, but, but we were able to work through our public safety team to, to deal with that particular issue, and I, I think our team did a very good job. The only other thing I would mention now, we do have our team member of the month for April. Craig Cataldo is in our licensing and permitting office, and routinely ranks very high among our employees up there in interaction with the public. Craig is a two-time winner of this award, and so we, we presented it to him last week, kind of surprised him. He's just got a great personality, and, and let me tell you, when people come in and they have to file for permits or licensing, they're having to open their wallets, they're having to pay for something. Sometimes it's not the easiest process, but Craig is just one of these that just can have a conversation and keep people happy and, and, and try to move, move things along, so we're very proud of him. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers, and, and congratulations, Mr. Cataldo. I can attest personally, he's always optimistic and positive about what the city's doing, and, and is always gracious in, in thanking council and staff for, for their support of our team, and does a great job, so.
One, one other thing I should note, because this came up at the last meeting. I know Mr. Waterman had to step away for, for a personal event tonight, but he had asked at the last meeting about meeting with the Georgia Department of Transportation. I did reach out to GDOT, the mayor was copied on that communication, sent some dates over to the district engineer. Those dates were not going to work with him, so we're trying to come up with someone from his team that can come and make a presentation to council in the next couple of months, so I did want to provide you that update.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions for Mr. Peppers? Thanks, sir. Let's have one item tonight. We are in the process, we'll be, begin updating our impact fee regulations, and we're not necessarily required to do this, but we're going to, you know, play it by the book. And I'm going to appoint an impact fee advisory board to, to advise as we go through this process of, of five members. And we've worked, Mr. Peppers and I, and I'm going to appoint four of those five tonight, and we'll confirm the fifth one as soon as we get their agreement to serve. But tonight, I'm going to report, appoint Raj Paul Segou, who's a Canton resident, Lee Oliver, who's a member of HPC, and is also in the office leasing business, Carolyn Goddard, who's a local real estate agent, and then Jennifer Hughes, who serves on our DDA, and is also in the real estate business. So I'm going to point those four members tonight, we'll point the fifth one as soon as we have.
Confirmation.
Confirmation from those, so. And I want to thank those, those residents for their willingness to serve on, on this committee, so. That's all I have this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation and real estate.
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
To, can you add to the topics? Sorry. Can you add the topics? Mr. John?
Oh, for, to discuss litigation and real estate.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
My motion is second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone. We will.